8:01 PM, so we will call this regular meeting of the East Lansing Board of Education to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Chambers.
Present.
Dr. Edsel.
Here.
Ms. Spink.
Here.
Dr. Lyons.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Walton.
Here.
Ms. Laco.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Lyons, would you read our mission statement, please?
Mission statement of ELPS is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the Board of Education approves the agenda of the August 22, 2022 regular meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by trustee Walton, seconded by trustee Lyons. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that the Board of Education approves the minutes of the August 8, 2022, regular meeting and August 16, 2022, special meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Chambers was the one I heard first. Sorry. Were there any corrections to the minutes as presented? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstained since I was absent from both meetings.
You don't need to abstain.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
It's fine. If you read the minutes, you don't have to abstain.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries. So we will move on to recognition. Trustee Martin, do you have any recognition this evening?
No recognition, but we're getting into the busy time of the year, so if there's anybody who's tuning in or watching this at a later date and you have somebody, student group, students, teachers who want to recognize, please email us and we'll be sure to recognize those individuals.
Thank you.
I would just add that today at our opening day, we recognized 78 staff members for their years of service that we started about five years ago, six years ago. And they start by getting service pins after 10 years in the district and then five years every year after that. And so I had to do three years' worth of recognition and acknowledgement of this, though. But I would just want to acknowledge and recognize six individuals. We have three people who either in 2020, '21, and '20, or '22, completed 30 years of service to East Lansing Public Schools. And so in 2020, Connie Cannon, who is an administrative assistant at Donley, completed her 30th year of service to the district. In 2021, Norm Scott did, who is a special education teacher at our middle school and also president of our East Lansing Education Association. And then this past year, Bonnie McGraw, who is an administrative assistant for our counseling department, completed her 30th year of service to the district. And then when I said six, we also have three people who completed 35 years of service to the district who were recognized today. And these three, we do service pins until 30, then we do plaques that are engraved with their names on them to recognize these milestones. In 2020, our Marble Library paraprofessional, Wallene DeGier, finished 35 years of service to the district. In 2021, Tavo Arceo, who does our grounds maintenance supervisor, he completed 35 years to ELPS. And just last year, so had been recognized today, Sabrina Arceo, no longer related to Tavo, but same last name. She's an art teacher at Marble, also completed 35 years of service to the district. So just worth recognizing those six individuals for their time in East Lansing.
Thank you.
But total, in total, 78 individuals recognized today. So, yeah, it was fun.
Amazing.
That's a recognition. Thank you for telling us.
Sure, sure.
When do parents who've had kids in the district for 30 years?
We should start one of those. I think you would.
Because I'm closing in on it. I'm closing in on it.
All right. If there is no other recognition this evening, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. So school starts for students this Wednesday, half day for elementary, full day for middle and high school. And again, I linked our school calendars with dates and times for each building. On my way here tonight, I had a chance to stop at one of our elementary back-to-school open houses. I stopped over at White Hills. They were just running from 6 to 7, so I only had a chance to stop at 1. And they were very crowded, so even parking was quite a mess, which I'm sure it was at all of our buildings. But it's super fun to see people coming back into the buildings. And I was telling some folks, it was, I was kind of like confuzzled when so many parents were walking in and going, ooh, look at this. You know, and I thought, gosh, are they new to East Lansing or have kindergarten students? But then one of them said to me, no, we haven't been able to come in the building since White Hills, you know, was built. So based because of our COVID protocols with visitors. So lots of families coming in and getting to explore our new buildings who haven't had a chance to walk through them yet, which was really exciting. Today was our first day back for staff. We held our welcome back breakfast and our opening event with all district staff this morning here at the high school. And it was the first time holding this event in person since fall of 2019. And it was purely awesome being back together. Loved it. A little construction update, and I will mention that both Dave Warner and Shane Lowesbury from Clark Construction are here also to answer any questions you may have. High school tennis courts are complete and in use. Our athletic field turf is in progress. Our scheduled home game this week will be played away at Portage Central Thursday evening. And we hope to play next week's games on our new field. The elementary outdoor learning spaces are being installed, and the Red Cedar Courtyard Playground for the two- to five-year-olds and the new amphitheater are complete. I posted some pictures on our social media, our district Facebook page the other day. I've got a little of last Wednesday. These were our tennis courts in use. That was our first day they were being used. And then now even these athletic fields pictures are old from Saturday. But you can see Saturday around noon time was the photo on the left. And then by Saturday evening, they'd rolled out a lot of that green turf. Now, it wasn't sewn in. Everything isn't done with it, but they've at least made a lot of progress on laying that turf. On the next page, you can see some of the photos from the Red Cedar Courtyard Playground. Looks very cool. Great opportunity for our two- to five-year-olds to have a very specific age-appropriate playground and equipment for them. And it's contained inside that courtyard. And then the amphitheater has been repoured as well because that was kind of starting to fall apart a little bit. And last, COVID protocols were sent to staff and families on Friday. Ingham County moved from low-risk level to medium Thursday evening. And I linked the current protocols that were sent out to district staff and families on Thursday. So if you have questions regarding, oh, you know what, one more thing, and then I'll go back to the construction that I shared as part of my superintendent's report. And I've shared this with our district staff and we used it today. But I also want everyone here to have a copy of it because it's really an outcome of the work our board and admin team completed to set goals that were aligned with our mission statement about a year and a half ago. And so this was a review of what we accomplished last year in terms of these goals. Nurture each child are all of our goals that fit with social, emotional, and mental health and wellness for both our staff and our students. We increased school social work and counseling support. At our buildings last year, we added a district wellness leader and a school nurse. And we implemented health and safety protocols. Our middle goal, part of our mission statement, educating all students, that is all about teaching and learning. So last year, we spent a lot of time emphasizing, reteaching routines and structures focused on re-establishing relationships and had a very expanded summer school offering in the summer of 2021 where we serviced almost 1,400 students. And then our Building World Citizens, part of our mission statement, really aligns with all of the action steps and activities we do around diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice. So in 2122, we added a Director of Equity and Social Justice. We created building social justice teams. We audited the Images, Celebrations, and Events section using the EJAT, which is the tool we're using from Justice Leaders Collaborative that helps us assess different areas within our district. And we started with one of Images, Celebrations, and Events at each building. And then we introduced the Core Course to more than just our administrative team through the Justice Leaders Collaborative also. So it was just an opportunity to share that even during really hard times last year, we still put a lot in place, made progress on our goals. And then if you flip it over, this was kind of a preview of what we're moving forward with in terms of action steps under those mission statement sections this year. For nurturing each child, we're implementing an updated Second Step and Trails program. So the Second Step is our K5 Social, Emotional Learning Program Tier One for everyone. And Trails has now come out with middle school and high school Tier One. So we're implementing that this year as well. We are launching an expanded PBIS system, so we've kind of revamped that. Really looked at it through an equity lens, which really hasn't been done much in the past with a lot of the trainings we've had. So both Claudia and our Justice Leaders Collaborative has helped us really look at that and make it fit with our goals in the district. We're initiating a Communities and Schools partnership here at the high school and have worked with that organization to hire an individual to lead that work around supporting students. We will be establishing a school safety committee. There's some, there's some work being done countywide, too, so I want to make sure what we're going to do at the district level aligns with the things we're looking at countywide. We started last week by touring probably about 45 fire and police officers through our high school buildings so that they could get a sense of what our building looks like outside of just looking at a map, ask their questions, check some of the safety things we had in place. And we'll be working to, together to create some of these and update some of our procedures that we're using for safety, for school safety. And we launched our Canines for Change program in all of our buildings. Two of our little ones were able to join us today at our opening day. Ernie and Gus were there. Around teaching and learning, our Educating All Students goal, we'll be revitalizing and launching a new MTSS framework. So that's multi-tiered systems of supports. If, you know, our framework, which really began as an RTI back in about 2008, 2009, when the ARA funds became available and all of the training and push was around these tiered systems of supports. What we found over the years is new staff, you know, isn't trained necessarily. And we needed to update our systems about what we expect for Tier One instruction, how we see Tier Two instruction going for all kids, and then when to specialize and pull out for Tier Three instructions. So Glenn and Nick and a committee worked a lot last year on revamping that framework that's being rolled out to our teachers tomorrow within their building staff meetings. We increased academic intervention positions this school year. And we adopted a new K5 reading, middle school science, and middle school social studies curricula that will be implemented this year. Finally, under Building World Citizens, I may have seen also, nope, it was in my PowerPoint this morning, not my post. But we have a bunch of our books came in, and Claudia and a team had books everywhere in our teachers lounge, sorting our diverse books Friday to get ready to share with teachers and hand out to them. We're going to continue to offer the Core Course and EJAT training from the Justice Leaders Collaborative as part of the five professional development days we'll have throughout the school year. So it won't be in place of instruction or outside of school time. Partnering, we're continuing a partnership with Resolution Services for continued restorative justice work at our middle school. And as I mentioned before, we'll be hosting the MCN National Student Conference in fall of 2023. It was going to be this fall, but we didn't, venues weren't available as late when we found out to be able to host it here with the number of where they needed to do, where they needed to be able to host that many students and chaperones. So they're not doing it anywhere this fall. They're doing an online one, but they'll do the next in-person one here in East Lansing in fall of 2023. So we've really, I think, finally really established like our action steps and goals to fit not just with the three buckets of goals that our teams established and really worked to build a year and a half ago, but also with our mission statement and see this being a real practical document, not just something we have hanging on our wall here. But it's really guiding our resource use, our time allocation, our, what we are spending our time and resources on here in the district. So, you know, we may have to say no to some things that don't align with these goals as we really focus our efforts here. But want to make sure that we're really doing our best to focus our time and efforts on these three buckets. So a little bit about our goals. We shared this with staff as well. And now, if you have questions on that, I'm happy to answer. Dave and Cliff, or Dave and Shane, sorry Shane, are here from Clark to answer questions about either our turf or anything about our construction projects and happy to open it up.
Are there any questions for the superintendent or Mr. Warner or Mr. Lowesbury?
I just want to say how much I appreciate this. This is really awesome and concise and concrete and, and everything that you said. This is what we're working on. This is where we're headed. And it's, you know, this is where we'll focus our resources. So I appreciate that. I do have questions for them, but I think we should maybe address the superintendent's.
Sure, absolutely.
It's been good for us to create this, too, because it's really helped us like really think about what we're focusing on, what we're putting resources toward. And when I say resources, I mean financial, time, professional learning, you know, there are a lot of things we could do. But we're really, you know, putting all of our eggs in these three baskets here.
And I know we've talked a lot about this, this is more of a comment. But with the way we've allocated professional development in our new calendar, I think it really lends itself to a deep dive like this. And it's, there's points throughout the year where we can really reinforce. I think that's great.
Sure. And I'll be happy to share, next step, I'll share our professional development calendar and options with you just so you can kind of see how it aligns with this would be really helpful for you all to know about, too. So we have it planned for the whole year and the options already. So, and I think we're really excited about how it does align with this.
Just taking on to trustees Edsel and Martin, I also really appreciate this work so much. And I know that there has been a lot of challenge over the last couple of years. And obviously, a lot of our focus at the board table in terms of our conversations have rightly centered around health and safety protocols and those kinds of things. But one of the things I've been most proud of is that even though that has been a primary focus, you know, Superintendent Laco, you and your team have still remained focused on all of the other really important things that we're doing. And this document comes out of that continued work. And I'm just so proud that our, our team is willing to continue to do the important work even when there is other important work. So kudos to everyone. We appreciate the efforts of our educators and know that it comes from depth of resources and energy. I don't know where, I don't know, I don't know how they tap into it to do these things. But I appreciate that they do it in the service of our kiddos. Thank you.
I'm also excited that there's even more going on that can't possibly all be captured in this one page. Like the work that's being done at the high school, you know, with the student services office. And I see that as nurturing each child, but also educating all students when they're talking about, you know, giving information to parents and families about financial aid and how the college application process works. So I see that as well as part of this, and I, I just think it's fantastic. I'm excited about that, too.
It's taken me six years to get here with it, but you don't know what you don't know early on. I think the other part that's really helped is the continuity of our administrative team. You know, we're not, we're not backing up to, you know, bring new people along the way. Like there's really been a lot of continuity within our team as a whole. And that's helped with moving these goals forward and really sticking with these goals, too. And knowing that they're long-term goals. We're not going to accomplish, I mean, we're always going to be educating all students, right? We're never going to check any of these off. It's just that our activities will be different.
We're done educating, yeah. Okay.
No more nurturing.
We won't put ourselves out of business.
No, I don't think so.
Always new ones coming along for education.
Are there other questions for the superintendent about either the, the update, the review, or the preview or other things mentioned in her report other than construction? Okay. Dr. Edsel, you had a question about the construction?
So the courtyard is for our preschoolers at Red Cedar and including our early childhood special ed. So the question has come up, how accessible is it? Is it wheelchair accessible? Is it not somewhat? Yeah. Either one of you want to come up here?
Yeah, if you don't mind coming to the podium.
Hordes of people listening at home. Team effort.
Yep. The slide, if you saw the slide on there, that is ADA accessible going up to it. And then the platform up top is ADA. The swings are also ADA. We have a ramp going into the swing area, so that is also. So the whole area is ADA accessible. The amphitheater, which is the logs, that area right there, the lower tier would be ADA.
It would be. Okay. I wasn't sure with the wood chips and the grass. Is that real grass? I mean, in these pictures.
It's turf.
Okay. I was gonna, we got turf there before the football field.
It's a different kind.
Okay.
Early childhood turf.
Okay, shoo, I'm glad we clarified that because woo. And so even these little, like this structure here, you could, this is ADA accessible, the little upper left-hand.
One climbing up into it.
Might not be.
I guess the whole design intent was for it to be accessible for anyone who's playing.
Okay.
You know, further design questions, I would refer to GMB, but ultimately, it's all done within current ADA.
Perfect. Thank you very, very much. That's the only question I have. So.
That was just one.
So I think the Red Cedar Courtyard and the amphitheater look terrific. The tennis court's terrific. The football field looks terrific, but the elephant in the room, you know, what are we, what's our expected timeframe to get it done, done?
Yep. The sprint turf has given us a revised schedule to be done 30/31st. They are expecting to allow the freshmen and JV games to play on.
Okay, so there's no.
Of August.
And there's no like, there's, there's no reason to let it sit after you finish. Once they, once they tie the last stitch or whatever and paint the last line, it's just good to go.
They'll take a groomer over it. They got to put infill, which is a bunch of rubber and sand into it, and it settles down into it. And they'll take a groomer and clean it all up, and they'll do that before the 31st.
The next step you'll see is they'll be putting all the logos, all the line mark, the hash marks and the numbers, the letters. And then they'll put the 6,000 tons of rubber and sand in it, which is all sitting out there in bags right now.
I was just going to buy my question. I wasn't sure if they put that in first or last. I mean, I know that it comes through.
So as, what I'm understanding then is that once all those steps are completed and the rubber and sand is installed, there's no like timeline that the, that needs to sit, like it's not like a, doesn't have to acclimate?
Nope.
We may have them come back the day after and groom it again. Let's see how it looks. But no, there is no, there's no painting of it. It's all, everything is stitched in. It's all full colored grass. So there's nothing getting painted on there. It's all.
Got it.
And where are we today on it? Like August 22nd or wherever today is?
Yeah. They're finishing green, what they call green in the field. So they're stitching all the, the main field. So they'll get that done, and then they'll start doing what they call the inlays, which is what Dave was talking about. They'll put the Trojan ladders. They'll get your helmet in the middle. They'll put the, all the yardage numbers in. And that all gets cut in and glued in. That'll happen next.
And obviously, there's some temporary fencing and some, some like areas meant to serve the construction project that have been set aside. Is the cleanup from that something that happens in the course of 12 or 24 hours, or does it take longer than that?
We'll break down all the temporary fences tomorrow, so the bus loop will be turned over backwards.
Okay.
Nice.
Some of the bags, some of the infill bags may stay up in greens. We're going to try and get it all down into the, down into.
Other questions regarding the construction? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Really does look terrific.
Fabulous.
All right. Any other questions regarding the superintendent's report? Okay, we will move on to public comment. I don't currently have any forms. It doesn't appear that there are any forms in the basket. If there is anyone wishing to make public comment, speak now. All right.
You had it.
Okay. We will move on to our action items. Could I have a motion to approve the request for annual delegation of the school plan review and inspection authority to the city of East Lansing?
I move the Board of Education approve the request for annual delegation of school plan review and inspection authority as presented.
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Walton. Is that who I heard on this side?
Probably, yeah.
Is, are there any questions or discussion regarding the motion? I would just mention that as I understand it, these are things that we do, well, it says right in the motion. But we do, we renew these annually. Is that correct, Mr. Pugh? Okay. And there are no changes from year to year, really. It's very consistent. Okay. Are there any questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Could I have a motion to approve the request for annual delegation of school plan review and inspection authority to Meridian Township?
I move the Board of Education approve the request for annual delegation of school plan review and inspection authority as presented.
Second. Moved by trustee Chambers, seconded by trustee Edsel. I would just note that we've, we filed these documents with both the city and the township because we have buildings that are in both municipalities, so. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion as presented? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to committee reports, if we have any.
Academic Tech, we did meet. I don't have the minutes in front of me, but it was a really fantastic meeting. We've been having ongoing conversations about, you know, support for students at the high school, counseling, talking about master scheduling. It's, you know, been an ongoing conversation. And we heard a report from high school administration about a holistic plan to support our students that is aligned with the goals that were just presented this evening. Just really wonderful. I'm so excited about the plans that are in place and where the future is going. And I'm sure that we'll hear more about it at the board table, too, at some point. Then some other updates, too, around technology, but really productive meeting, and I'm super excited for the school year to start.
Very good. Facilities.
We have not met. We will schedule our fall meetings in the next week or so. So I'll email the committee members and we will get rolling with our, our next round of meetings.
Very good. Finance.
Have not met. I'm assuming Mr. Pugh will be reaching out to us shortly to set up fall meetings.
Intergovernmental Relations. No report. No report from personnel. Policy Committee.
Policy did meet on August 17th. And the main topics, we made some minor changes to the, what is it called?
Transgender policy.
Transgender policy, but yeah, so we made some changes to transgender policy. I am running that past a couple of groups, individuals who's more their specialty. And then I have run it past Troon, the changes that we had made to this point. And so then eventually that will come back to the board for update. The second thing we discussed, there were a number, Troon had a number of edits and updates to the policy manual that we will need to vote on. At our next meeting, we'll be going more into depth on those. Some of them are, you simply accept as is, but we still do have to vote on and accept them. And so I'll let you know when those get into items of information. And the third one was the Acceptable Use Agreement, a policy that Christian Classy had asked for a couple of changes. Those edits were made. Kelly has edited. And it's not in today's items of information. So it'll be in items of information in two weeks, very minor changes. But we do, we will need to vote on those to, to update in the policy manual. So those were the main ones. Equity policy remains on the burner. Hopefully, be discussing it more in depth at our September meeting.
Very good. Are there any announcements this evening?
I just want to say, you know, happy first week of school. It's such an exciting time. I know I've got a kid at school at home who's excited about middle school, and it's just an exciting, so congrats to all of our students and educators.
I know I've got a kid at school at home who's excited about middle school, and it's just an exciting, so congrats to all of our students and educators.
I got a kid at home who's excited about telling her kid at home everything there is to know about the middle school.
Oh, yes, bring it on, bring it on.
We had a great opening day today. Like it was so much fun to have everybody back together and celebrate, folks, and celebrate some of our accomplishments, and yeah, it was really fun to be back together again, so. You know, we haven't done it for three years, so yeah, it felt kind of new again, but it was a good, successful way to kick off our school year, for sure.
Very good. Any other announcements this evening? Hope everyone has a great first week of school.
Thank you. You, too.
Thanks, I'll try. We'll stand adjourned at 7:32.